Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council Study Session for Monday, October the 2nd. All of our council is present with the exception of Vice Mayor Heredia, who is joining us via Zoom. Frankie, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. First item on our agenda, item one, is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting. I know we went over this at our study session just a few days ago, but council, is there anything on -- Mr. Brady, anything about tonight's agenda that you'd want to update us on?
I think just to be clear, for the item on the drive-throughs, Mayor, can you just make sure it's clear what is being introduced tonight based on the discussion we had on Thursday, please?
Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, based on the discussion on Thursday, the ordinance that's being introduced today will make one change from what was presented on Thursday, and that is that the onsite circulation study would be required for all drive-throughs moving forward, and then the portion on the residential property, that did not change. So that's the change that's in the ordinance before you today. The onsite circulation and stacking study would be required for all drive-throughs.
All right. And I left that meeting before that discussion was entirely over. So what was the other thing that you said is that that is on and what is off?
So what did not change, Mayor Giles, is the 100-foot separation from residential properties. That is still in the ordinance with the option to do a sound study if you can't meet that requirement.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Mayor, that was a recommendation, the city staff. That was part of our recommendation from the beginning.
That's correct.
We changed from what was proposed, what was presented.
That's correct.
Okay.
It was what we discussed.
So that is what is on the agenda today, just for introduction, and then we will have a, assuming that passes, that's what will be the subject of the next council meeting. Yes, Councilmember Duff.
A couple of questions on that. A CUP, there's an administrative fee for that. It's like $2,500, is that correct?
Mayor, councilmember Duff, there is a fee associated with the council use permit. I don't know that fee off the top of my head. I might look to Nana to help me with that.
There's a fee too. Okay. And then a CUP has to go through P and Z before it goes to council?
Councilmember Duff, that's correct.
Okay. So the increase in our CUPs is a, well, there's a fee involved, and we're not sure exactly what that is, and it will have to go through P and Z as well.
Mayor Giles, councilmember Duff, that is correct, and the analysis that we did is of the 71 that we've seen since January of 2021, there would have been an additional five cases separate from what's already coming to council that would have come to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council, any other questions regarding the drive-through, introduction of the drive-through ordinance? All right. Thank you. Any other questions regarding anything else on our agenda for tonight? All right. Moving on, item two on our, on our agenda. Oh, okay. Okay. Item two is a presentation on sober, sober living homes in Mesa. Candace, our deputy city manager, thank you for taking the lead on this topic.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me here and talking about a topic for sober living homes. So sober living homes, what we want to do is, how did we get here? Why am I here talking about sober living homes today? This is prevalent, it's a topic that's come up across the country, it's not just in Arizona. It's basically, there's a national healthcare fraud scheme. The first ones to encounter it were the state of Florida, and since then, it has moved to other states, including our state of Arizona. On this slide here, there is, at the end of this presentation, we provided some links to news articles, if you're interested in looking to see what those news articles are about these particular jurisdictions and municipalities that have encountered this, but we included that at the end if you want to go there. What they are is unlicensed sober living home. What they're trying to do is they try to avoid state regulations, and those state regulations are made for the protection of our residents and the vulnerable individuals. And we'll kind of go through that today, but what is a sober living home? What are the problems we're encountering today? And what is it that we can do about it? So in Mesa's experience, just like we did in Florida and in other states, Mesa is experiencing this across the whole state. Typical things that you see when you're talking about an unlicensed sober living home are people are coming and going, they're loitering, there doesn't seem to be long-term residents at that particular place of residency. We're seeing alcohol and drugs are openly consumed, both within the property and around the outsides of the property. Residents of these homes are told that they're not supposed to talk to their, to neighbors. They're not supposed to stay in the homes, don't go out, don't talk to your neighbors, don't tell them where, who you are or why you're there. Some of the experiences that we have had going out into some of these facilities in Mesa is they may, the people in the site may say they're in a sober living home, they may say they're in a recovery home. We encountered an area where they were actually told that this is a government experiment, we're going to see if this works, and that's what they were told when they were housed in these, in these areas. So a lot of differences, but those are kind of what we're seeing across the board. So again, what we're going to talk about, though, is who has the authority when it comes to sober living homes? So we're talking about the state authority and what their requirements are today, and then we're going to talk about two different local authorities. One is the zoning authority that we have in the city of Mesa, and then also our business license authority, and then we do have some recommendations and next steps for the council. So just as a short history, originally, this city was allowed to regulate sober living homes, and we actually had some, we had an ordinance in place for the, for the city of Mesa. Since then, the state has taken that back. With our approval, the city's actually preferred that the state take the lead when it comes to regulating sober living homes, and they have done that. And so since they gave that over to the Department of Health Services, Arizona Department of Health Services, then the municipalities no longer have that authority to regulate sober living homes. So all sober living homes are regulated from the state level, so it's one unified regulation across the state. We do want to make note that we approve, staff does approve of what was regulated, what was put into place. They are very detailed regulations on what a sober living home should do, the rules they should follow, exit strategies for folks who are going to leave the program. There's, they have individual contracts with the people who are living in the home, so there's a lot of rules and regulations around these, and the city does support the regulations that were put in place at the state. The defined sober living home, we're going to talk about why this is, this is, this portion of it is problematic for us. It does define a sober living home as any premises, place, or building that provides alcohol-free or drug-free housing. It also has things like promoting independent life skills, doing activities that would help with recovery from these substance use disorders, having a supervised setting, those types of places. The thing that's really causing problems for the regulation of these homes is the definition including alcohol-free or drug-free, drug-free housing within the definition itself. That's, that's causing some obstacles for us and for DHS as they go into these homes and try to regulate, because it's within the definition, it's being interpreted that if alcohol is on premises, then therefore it's not a sober living home, and then that's causing problems with trying to enforce regulation. So that is one of the items that the city is going to be pursuing, along with the other cities and towns in Arizona, as we work through the National League of, the Arizona, the League of Cities and Towns. We'll be pursuing a change to that particular definition so that we don't have that hurdle going forward. One thing that we really want to discuss is that legally-run licensed sober living homes play a vital role in the community, and we want to make sure the sober living homes that are, that are licensed, that are looking out for the benefit of their residents are getting a bad rap with this insurance fraud scheme, and we want to make sure that those folks who are operating them within the city of Mesa, that we do support them. This is not anything against the ones who are being run well and run legally. We do want to make it very clear that the one, the homes we're talking about are unlicensed homes, and they do not have the well-being of their residents in mind. Their purpose is to warehouse individuals, not house them, and their purpose is to insure, to bill insurance fraudulently in order to make money. And so those are the ones we're talking about today. So when we talk about the issue with sober living homes, it's really the unlicensed sober living homes that we're talking about. So how does this actually work? How does access fraud fund these bad actors? Now, we want to make clear, it's not access, it's access fraud that's funding these bad actors, and how does this go together? Why can't we just turn off access and all these housing units would just go away? We don't, access is like any other medical plan like you and I were, have. It pays for medical expenses, it actually doesn't pay for housing, so there are no direct payments between access and the housing, whoever's running this particular housing unit. What happens is a company comes in, sets up a medical clinic, so an outpatient medical clinic like you and I would go to, that has patients that come and go. They set that up, a different organization actually sets up the housing. They find individuals who are in need of housing, who are in need of resources, they offer them free housing. In return, they, they are required to sign up for access, and if they, or the, and/or the American Indian Health Program, because it's actually a more lucrative program when it comes to medical reimbursement. So once they have that information, the second organization gives that information to the first organization, who then files access claims for services that are actually not rendered to those individuals. So they're using their information to file fraudulent claims to access. It's so lucrative that that first organization then gives kickback money to the people who are running the housing organization, but there's nothing actually on file, it's very hard to follow the dollars. So that's what makes it difficult. So it is an access fraud scheme. Access fraud is not what the city of Mesa has any kind of authority over, that is being handled by the state and by access, and we're going to let them handle that access side. What we're looking at is the housing side, and how can we assist or help to find these bad actors? Overall, what are our goals? The goals are to make sure that vulnerable people are able to click the quality services that they need. We want to make sure that our residents are not living in unhealthy situations, whether it's a sober living home or an assisted living home, or anywhere where they're in the care of others. We want to make sure that they're in healthy situations, not unhealthy. We want to make sure that sober living homes that are within the city of Mesa are run well, they're, they're clean, they're regulated, they're, they're following the rules from, from DHS. At the same time, we don't want to overburden our good actors, the good people who are providing services that are necessary in our community. The other thing we need to keep in mind is that residents of a good sober living home are considered to have disabilities, and therefore they fall under the Disabilities Act, and we also have to watch for the Fair Housing Act. So we want to make sure that we're taking those into consideration with any acts that we want to, to do to try to address this issue.
I just want to clarify, on your last statement that people living in the legal sober living homes fall under that, don't people living in the illegal ones too?
Yes, I apologize, Mayor.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. So just like any other disability, an alcohol or a drug addiction is considered a disability, and anybody with that falls under the Disabilities Act.
And is there, do they have to like have it certified by a doctor or something, or just someone says they have an addiction problem and so then they have a disability?
So Mayor and councilmember Spilsbury, I don't, not going to pretend I know the legal definition, but the fact that they have sought treatment and then are pursuing the Recovery Sobriety Act would put them, would have them fall under the disabilities.
Okay. So we're just kind of assuming that some of these problematic homes in our units, in our city, have people who fall under that category, but there's really no way to verify that per se, whether they're like legal or illegal?
For the, for the disabilities.
Yes.
It would be, again.
We're just kind of making the assumption.
Right, it is a medical, and therefore would be protected by HIPAA.
Okay.
And so there is, because there are in a sober living, if they were in a sober living home environment, then the assumption would be that they're recovering from a drug or alcohol addiction, and therefore would fall under Disabilities Act.
Okay.
So that makes, I see, good?
Well, I think the way you ensure that, right, is that it's licensed. I mean, that's the state's job to verify that, right? I mean, it's the ones that aren't licensed that we.
Yeah, I guess that's my point, right? Since we're dealing with a bunch of potentially unlicensed places, how would we know if, I've been told we can't go after them because of just the disability angle, but there's no way to really know if the people living there are or not, I guess is what my question is.
And so Mayor and council, one of the things, as we went back and we talked to, when we talk to residents, so if it's an unlicensed facility, that we don't have a license on file with DHS, and we go in and we start talking to the residents, usually they will say, "We're in a recovery home, we're a sober living home." A lot of them will self-identify.
Right.
That they are in recovery, or they're, you know, they're, they're dealing with the type of thing, and those, that's the type of information that our staff can find, and those are the, that's the type of information that we then send to DHS and say, there's, the residents are self-identifying as being in a recovery home, and we pass that information on to DHS. But it would be, you, because they're unlicensed, it would be information we would gather by being onsite, by doing interviews, those types of things. So first, we're going to talk about Arizona Department of Health Services, or ADHS, and, and just, we kind of talked about it a little bit before, but they're really the.
Candace, sorry about the delay here. So I think part of the investigation is we're finding that some of the unlicensed homes are not truthful in what they're doing, so it complicates the investigation, and therefore those patients or whomever are in the homes, they can't really divulge information because of HIPAA and other things. So it's really a conundrum for our city, so setting these regulations and some of the things you're going to talk about in the future, solid slides, sets the precedent of how we're going to operate in the future. So I don't know, does that help at all?
Correct. Mayor and councilmember Freeman, that, that is absolutely correct. We had a, a property that we dealt with where we did do a lot of onsite review with multiple staff members, we talked with residents as much as of those who would talk with us, and we were able to gain enough information to have DHS come in and do an onsite investigation for particular, for particular area. And through that, they were able to assess from, from their viewpoint what triggered the fact that there needed to be a license, and there wasn't a license at that property, and they actually did a cease and desist, and they start to do the fines at $1,000 a day. So they really have, and that's really what we're talking about, is, is the DHS is, has, has the enforcement ability that the city of Mesa does not. And so the more information we can gather to show that what is happening at a particular property should be licensed by DHS, the better. That's the information we, we can hand over to DHS, they do their investigation, and then we hope that they find, make, they have to get licensed, or a cease and desist order is given to them, and they start receiving fines. And so at the end of the day, that's really, that's what we're looking for at the local, at the local level, is we want to make sure that we're leveraging the power of DHS and their enforcement ability, because we do not have the enforcement ability, again, we don't regulate sober living homes, the state does, and so anything we can do to aid them in their enforcement is, is just the best route for us. There are some gaps, we already talked about the definition, and so we'll be pursuing that to try to change that definition to allow DHS to come into some of these homes, where maybe it's being interpreted that they don't meet the definition of a sober living home, and, and so some people are interpreting that means that DHS does not have authority, and so we'll, we'll be looking at that. The other item that is problematic for us is their inability to readily share information with municipalities, actually put into the statute that they can't share information regarding locations of licensed sober living homes. So if a sober living home is licensed, we can see that an operator is licensed, but we can't see the locations of the homes that they're, that are licensed. And so that would really, there are some, there are, there's a couple times that they can share it with us, with zoning, with public safety, those types of things, but on an ongoing basis, we really don't have that transparency that would really be helpful at the local level when we're dealing with a problematic residence. And so that's another item that we'll be looking at with the league to try to change in the upcoming session. When it comes to the local level and our local regulation, what we can and what we can't do, we're going to talk about two things. The first one is on the zoning side of our, of our regulation, and it has to do with our community residents. And so this slide right here really just has verbatim what our community residence is in our code. I do have the next slide kind of summarizes it a little bit easier, summarize it into a couple bullet points, all those words. And so really, it's if you are four or fewer individuals in a home, you are considered a family, whether you are related or unrelated. So four unrelated individuals in a, living together in a, in a household is considered a family. For families, we do not have any kind of city registration, there's no separation, you're just considered a family like any other family who's in a household. If you have five to 10 residents that are unrelated with disabilities in a household, those are considered a community residence. A community residence needs to register, so it's, it's not a particular permit, it's not a license, it's a, it's a zoning registration, so you need to register with the city. The property owner must approve if they are not the property owner, if they are renting, then the property owner would have to approve that particular use of that property. There is a 1,200-foot separation requirement from any other community residence. So once you register, another community residence could not register with the city within 1,200 feet of that first one that registers. Depending on where they are, or if they're transitional, there's two different types of a community residence. One has more long-term tenants, up to a year, who are in those homes, and another one might be more transitional, anything less than a year is considered transitional, and that does trigger a count, a use permit if it's transitional for some, for some zoning areas.
And I was on the council when we did this community residence thing, so can you just remind me how we compare it to other cities around us in the East Valley?
So Mayor and councilmember Spilsbury, we, we compare very similar to other cities. We actually used a lot of our code from others, Jim could speak to it more for the specifics, but there are not other cities who are lower in the number of people. So the five or more is a standard type of threshold, if you will, of when it becomes a community residence versus a definition of family. So we're very consistent, if not on the more conservative side.
And if, in a typical, what we see, community residences, legal community residences in our city, are they typically over five residents?
You know, Mayor and councilmember Spilsbury, I'm not familiar with our standard community residences in the city, and I'd have to, I'd have to look that up, but if they're anywhere between five and 10, and they cannot be over 10 for a community residence unless they have an exception, there's a way to do that.
I'm trying to remember what conversations we had around this two years ago, but, so I get why the four or fewer residents don't have the same requirements, but I'm just thinking that if they were a sober living home with four or fewer residents, even if they were legal, they, we still wouldn't want them, a whole bunch of them all put into the same property and have unit after unit be sober living, even if they were all legal. So I'm just wondering, I don't think the way to do that is by separation requirements necessarily, but we, there, there is no way to do separation requirements for four and under then, correct?
Correct, correct. Mayor and councilmember Spilsbury, anything four and under is considered a family by definition, and by definition, under the Fair Housing Act, you can't discriminate on a family because that they contain people with disabilities.
Okay. There was a bunch of studies that it's better for the residents that live in these community residents to have that 1,200-foot separation, so it just is kind of, it bothers me, I guess, that we could have a bunch of four or fewer residents all next to each other, because that's not good for them either. I'm looking out for the victims here, too.
And I would say, one thing I forgot to say about the DHS licensing, they have to be licensed with DHS if they have two or more. There, so it's, it's not this four, the four or five is a local zoning, which is the definition of family. When it comes to the Arizona Department of Health Services, their regulations require that anybody running a sober living home, which is two or more, so it's not you taking care of a family member, or your friend, I should say, because they'd be unrelated, but if you have two or more in a home, then they need to be licensed. They do not have a separation requirement for the licensing of a sober living home at the state level, that, and, but that would be a regulatory issue with a sober living home, so if that's something that the league wanted to look at, or the cities wanted to look at, that could be a recommendation going forward as well. It would be at the state level for the regulation of the sober living home itself. So the first thing we're going to talk about when it comes to zoning is we're going to talk about clustering, which is really what councilmember Spilsbury just talked about, is properties that are right next to each other, the clusters, meaning the clustering, the clustering of sober living homes, whether it is a community residence or not, the fact that they're clustering together. And so the way that these bad operators are able to put them right next to each other is to stay at four or less because they're not required to register with the city. Again, they should be licensed, but they're come, they're coming under our radar, and so if they don't, if we don't have information to hand off to DHS to require the licensing, again, we're just kind of in that same boat. But as we look at it, those are one of the ways that they're trying to avoid regulation by DHS, they're trying to avoid regulation by the city of Mesa, that's why I say four or less. In Florida, they have instituted a new term called recovery communities, and Maricopa County also just adopted it a few months ago, but it started off in Florida with the, with the municipalities that were experiencing it down there. And a recovery community would then allow, in essence, for if we have this clustering of multiple properties or units altogether that are four, that four or less, because they are clustering together, it would be considered a community, a recovery community in its entirety. And we are recommending that a community, recovery community then be considered like our community residence, meaning a recovery community would need to register with the city, would need to have a point of contact, they would need to, they would need to be, show that they are licensed with the state of Arizona, and then that would then create a boundary, if you will, around that recovery community, so that another recovery community or sober living home could not be within 1,200 feet of that recovery community. So there might be an instance where it makes sense one way or the other, what they're finding in Florida is someone is coming in and buying a whole apartment complex, and then the entire apartment complex is a sober living home, they're all less than, they're all less than five, they've got a few in each apartment, but it's a recovery community as a whole, they register as a recovery community, and then all of the applications, then we can apply the same thing that our community residents would do.
I apologize because our city, our city attorney and Candace met with me for an hour and a half, and I asked a lot of questions, so I have more, or just to remember what we talked about. So there's not a unit minimum or maximum on these recovery communities, though?
In Florida, they have not instituted a particular maximum number of units that would be in the recovery community.
So they could have 80 units in one complex that are all sober living, but that would be called a recovering community, so another one couldn't go, what, 1,200 feet?
Couldn't go 1,200 feet away from.
From that one.
That one.
Okay.
And I have a, and no minimum either, right? So you could just have two? Could you just have two?
You could have two, and that would be a clustering of two, and that would be a recovery community. So it is a way, again, we want to, we want to stress, it's a way to address the clustering, it's, it's not a cure-all, it's not a fix-all for, for unlicensed, on, you know, that are not doing good things, but if we can go in and let them know that they need to be a recovery community, they need to register, part of registration is showing that you have the valid licensing from DHS to run your sober living home that you're running. So it allows the city to come in and ask those questions and to verify that they're licensed. Again, the unlicensed ones, we just have to find them, and so all the tools that we can get to ask the questions, to knock on the door, to collect the information, and to require some type of a registration, and a self-identification as a sober living home or recovery home, something that would cue in that DHS is, is the authority, and now they can come in and require that they be licensed or do a cease and desist.
So whether, this is talking about apartment complex, and if it's residential, it has a zoning, wouldn't this, if it's, if it's classified, if we adopt something like this, a recovery community, wouldn't it hold a different zoning, have to go through some kind of approval process? Have to go through some kind of approval process?
Mayor and Councilmember Duff, it would not because, again, four or less is considered a family, and there is no zoning regulation on a family, an individual unit or place with four or less folks. The five or more would consider a registration. Even for a community residence, they just have to register. So it's not a zoning variance. It is just, a community residence requires registration, and then it can be in certain zones. Now, certain zoning would require a use permit. But your standard, single-family home neighborhood would not require anything besides registering with this. So at five or more, they would register with the city. But registration means that we would verify that they have a license with DHS. So that means they're licensed. They fall under the, so DHS can walk through the door. If they're a sober living home and they want to do an inspection, they can knock on the door and they can do an inspection. We can't do that at the local level, but they can.
Okay. I didn't, I forgot about this next line. Requiring zoning registration and recovery. So I'm talking about the actual land use zoning. So we're making recommendations to the league, which is, you know, lobbying, trying to organize all the cities to make a regulation that works, right? So I'm saying would needing to zone the property. I feel like everything is on the, is not preliminary, like any other thing you do in the city. You have to have appropriate zoning, and you have to have this place and this in place. And then you can live or operate your business or whatever that is. But this, it feels like, just do your thing and then register. And we're just like, oh, this isn't working. This isn't working. I'm looking at preemptive type of measures instead of enforcement on the back end.
Mayor and Councilmember Duff, in theory, they should be registering before operating. That doesn't mean that's what they're doing. But you should have, so it's a permitted use in residential zoning. So all the residential zoning has a permitted use for a sober living home. Same thing as it would for an assisted care facility. And then it's only when it's five or more then they would need to register. They should be registering before they have the fifth person in there.
So, sorry to interrupt, but a home, I can see how it would be in the same zoning because it's still a home. A home is a home, right? But I'm talking about an apartment complex being housing or it being a business. If we have a complex and multiple rooms, housing some kind of exchange, receiving money for some kind of service, we call that a business. And the zoning is different in order to operate that building, right? Versus in a residential, I don't know. Maybe I'm going down, I don't know. I'm probably confusing everything.
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Duff, we will, we're going to address the business license as well, which is the other side of it. So a business could be in a residential property, could also be in a commercial property or an industrial property. And when we talk about the business licenses, they do apply to all. And so we're going to try to use that as a tool as well. But to finish this, I think we've hit most of this on here. So what we're really saying is that adding the recovery community as a tool in our toolbox would allow us to help to address some of these that are considered families while they're independent. But once they go next to each other, they would then be considered a recovery community and would allow us to require registration and verification of licensing.
Mayor, if I might, Mayor and Councilmember Duff and Councilmember Spillsbury. And your thought is, as far as, normally, businesses have to get their licenses before they operate. And so going back to that problem with the definition of a sober living home for DHS, that's part of the problem, is that they're gaming that definition so they don't have to get that license. And so changing that definition has a huge impact in requiring them to get that license before they begin their operations. But I also hear you in the concept on the recovery communities. So I'll just, the concept as it is in Florida is whether it's two units or many units, it's a recovery community. And I understand the frustration as you get to larger numbers of units, sort of the larger impact of that. We've hired the national expert that did do Florida. And so we just recently retained him to look at also here and to look at potentially other nuances. But even if we just did what Florida did and Maricopa County did just recently, which mimicked what Florida did, regardless of the number of units, two to whatever number it is, they would have to have that state license, so that which they are avoiding right now. And it puts sort of what we refer to as a dot on the map, right? The pin on the map that then requires you to be separate from other community residents. And if there's already a dot on the map from another community residence, that might already preclude you from being able to locate it where you are. And so even if we were to just mimic what Florida does, it does have an impact. But we are also looking at, possibly looking at changes or refinements to what Florida and Maricopa County have done.
Just as a summary, the recommendations would be that we would add recovery community as a land use classification and that we would require a zoning registration and proof of licensing if they, and comply with the separation requirements. Again, these are not limited. We're not trying to limit the good operators. So we would want to look for that. But we don't feel that this would limit the good operators. We feel that this would really apply to these ones who are trying to fly under the radar. The other area that we looked at was our general business license. So our general business license today is in the code for the City of Mesa. The purpose of the business license, as outlined in our code, is public health, safety, and welfare. And it does say that a business is not supposed to operate unless they have a business license from the City of Mesa. It applies to both residential and commercial locations. So it would apply to the residential, what we're talking about here, with sober living homes. It would also apply to assisted living center care homes and those types of things as well. We do a lot of exclusions for this to try to make our business license as easy as possible. There are exclusions to the property rental. That's actually a state statute. So we're not allowed to enforce a business license if you're just leasing out your property. So if you own the home and you're leasing it to somebody else, that does not fall under a business license. They have other requirements for registering with the county. But at the city level, we exclude if you have to get another license because we didn't want to make it cumbersome by getting multiple licenses. So if they already need to get a mobile food vendor license, we don't then require the business license on top of that.
On the property rental part, is it the person who is renting their property as a business doesn't have to do it? But if the person that's renting has a business, would they have to do a business license?
Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, that is exactly correct. So if you own a home and you have the right to lease it to somebody else, that is just property lease. That's just property rental. And that would not fall under a business license. But if the LLC is renting that property from you, an LLC is not living there, they are actually conducting business out of that home, they would fall under, they would need a business license in order to do that.
Okay. I wanted to make sure because I think that that's what's happening in my district, that they're renting the units from someone. So that's why I wanted to make sure they would still have to do this part at least. Okay.
Yes, and those are, and Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, those are the things that we really need to make sure that we understand. If you own a piece of property, you have the right to lease that out to somebody else, regardless of who the somebody else is. We can't tell somebody who they can and cannot lease their property to. We can't tell someone who they can and cannot sell their property to. Now, the person who is leasing it, they're the ones who are using that property. So the use of that property is different than the lease of that property. And that's what we want to be very clear on. Leasing the property is fully valid. You don't need to tell the City of Mesa that you're leasing a piece of property. It's how you're using that property. So if you're using that property for a business, which in these cases of these unlicensed sober living homes, or even a licensed sober living home, right, is the primary purpose of that piece of property is a business. The primary purpose is not your primary residence. So they're operating a business out of that property. Therefore, they need a business license under our current code for the City of Mesa. Going forward, the business license recommendations is, right now on our application for a business license, it is very general. We do use it as an education tool to make sure that they receive information from us. It was really during COVID, it was very helpful to reach out to those small businesses who may not know that there's grants available or, you know, different funding available to help them through. We have the Small Business Assistance Program that we run. That's a really good way to reach out to them and make sure anyone in the Small Business Assistance Program who wants to use those types of different tools and register with the hub also has to reinforce it with getting their business license. So everybody's kind of all together. We know who's there. But what we could do is, we can expand a little bit without making it too onerous about registering, is to collect some better information about what type of business that they're running so that we would know if they're dealing with a vulnerable population as their clientele. Are they responsible for the housing or the care of a vulnerable population or others? That's the type of information that we don't necessarily gather in our current application. And so we would recommend that we look at our application. It doesn't require a change in code. It just requires a change in looking at the application itself and what type of questions do we want to include in the application that would help staff know that maybe there's another license that's required, and they could follow up with DHS or follow up with that business to make sure that they're licensed appropriately for anything, whether it's sober living home or anything else that requires a county or a state license to be in that business. Ongoing efforts that we have with the business license is really trying to, we'd like to see that. Staff would recommend we try to leverage the business license for that purpose. We've used it as an education tool, and I think it's worked well. But I don't know that all the businesses really see the full value in having that business license. If we were to leverage it, we're going to continue to look for, how could we leverage it as the one-stop shop? So if you're really not sure what type of licensing or registration you would need to open a business in Mesa, if you fill, once you fill out your business license application, if we can gather the right information, we could then, staff could tell you, you also need this license, or you need to register over here. Have you contacted DHS? All of those types of things. When a small business is opening, it's sometimes very difficult to understand all the different ramifications of what you want to do. And so really, this would be a great outreach effort if we could get all of the businesses to go through the business license as their first step. That would really, I think, help them in the long run because we'd have educated staff who know exactly who they need to talk to rather than routing them through maybe three or four of our offices here at the city. So really, a summary of what we're looking at today. Our biggest, you know, the most impactful thing we can do is to work at the state legislature to get the change to the definition of what a sober living home is and the ability for the Arizona Department of Health Services to truly work with the cities and allow for more information exchange. We know that the location of these are confidential. Cities work with confidential information on a daily basis. We know how to deal with confidential information. And so that's something that we pursue on that regard. If council is supportive of drafting of language for the recovery community and adding that to our zoning code, from here, the staff would go back, start to draft that code, work with our consultant that we have hired, who has done it for the municipalities in Florida. And then we would come back to council with that language. So it wouldn't be approving any language today. It's just approving the concept of a recovery community. If you'd like us to go forward with that, we'll pursue that, and then we'll bring back the recommendations on what that would look like. And then we'll continue to work on our business license to try to modify the information we're collecting without making it too difficult or cumbersome, but to allow us to help those and then help their clientele that they're working with at all at the same time.
Thank you, Candace. Council, additional discussions and questions on this? Ms. Spillsbury?
Question on the last part.
Frankie, I got you. We'll pick you up here right after Ms. Spillsbury.
Is there any timeframe on any of the business license stuff?
So Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, the business license is the one that we can probably move on the fastest. We'll be working with business services and the actual application itself and how we can do that, what types of questions we'll need to vet. The least amount of questions, because we don't want to make it onerous to put the application in, but that would give us the best information.
And I guess I should have worded my question better. Is there any kind of timeframe, that's maybe not the right phrase, for businesses to get these things done?
We would like them to register as soon as possible so that we can help them.
But if you find out they're like not licensed through the state, they have 30 days, or they have six months, or we don't have any kind of regulations like?
So Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, we do have a discounted rate right now to get your business license. Right now, we do not have the penalties for not registering.
Or any time limits?
Or time limits.
Is that the right phrase?
Yeah, when you register your business, it would be for one year. Right now, it's only $10. The $10 application fee to put it in as we kind of ruled it out. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't cover the cost of administering it. But we want to, we don't want that to be a financial, we don't want financial to be an impediment to people registering. We don't have a timeline on it. We'd like as many businesses to register as possible. We currently do not have enforcement penalties in our code.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank you because this is, we have a lot of meetings about this. And I think most people know I have a huge issue in my district with this that's neighborhoods being severely impacted by one of these fraudulent sober living homes. And so I just want to thank you, and I appreciate everything that so many different departments in our city are doing, especially our fire and police that have to go out there repeatedly. So I really appreciate all the work that's been done. This is great. This is a great starting point. There's three really good things, I think, that we should, I support moving forward with them. I wish we could do more. I think you are aware of that. So, but I also don't want to hurt the good actors, which I think is a concern, a valid concern, that these homes are needed in our community. And we want to make sure that the people who are doing it right aren't punished in any way by anything that we're doing who are doing it right aren't punished in any way by anything that we're doing or that the state's doing. I know that access and DHS and the Attorney General's Office are all doing a lot of things and that we're trying to come at it at a bunch of different angles as well, just to see like where we can have an impact and to stop some of this from happening. I really just, to reiterate, the recovering community is still really concerns me because when you think of these vulnerable populations, that's not good. Even if they're legally run, it's not good for them to be in a community just full of sober living people that are trying to get help. So, but I don't know, I guess I haven't, I have, well, I'll just keep asking so that we can keep looking at what maybe some different options are for that particular one, but I think we got to start somewhere and that would at least, like you said, put a dot on the map that would maybe help distance-wise. So that's all I'll say for now, just that, you know, really want to express my thanks for the city for jumping on this and so many doing so many things to try to help this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. Vice Mayor Heredia?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think I go back to your point, Candace, that you made on that in order to get a license at DHS, if you have two, you needed to get, you need to get a license, right? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, Vice Mayor.
Okay. And so what, once they register to get a license, we're having more than two or two, why wouldn't we mirror that piece? Because they're now registering as a business, as a sober living home, and be able to then require them to have a license based on DHS requirements that they already got a license and then be able to work on that stacking issue as far as, you know, one particular house registers as a sober living home, the distance requirements then comes in based on that DHS and we mirroring that requirement that DHS has. Does that make sense?
So Mayor and Vice Mayor Heredia, so I'm going to, I'm going to kind of restate it just to make sure that I understand. And so I think your question has to do with if they have to register with DHS because they have two or more, I think the question is, why would we not consider that a community residence and institute the 1,200-foot distance? Is that correct?
Yes. I know, like in our ordinance, it's four or more, but DHS being that it's two or more, why wouldn't we go with what DHS has and mirror the distance requirement based on DHS needing a license for two or more? Based on that, then they have become a sober living home in the state's purview, right? And then for us to mirror the state's DHS purview there.
I was going to check on this one.
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor. And this, let me, and I'll give you, I'll go back and give you a little history and then I'll answer the question. And this goes back to why the legislation was changed back in 2018 and with the multiple municipalities and the league. And I think it was Prescott that took the lead at that time to empower DHS at the state level, was because at the state level, the ability to regulate this business for the benefit of those patients that are receiving these services, they were able to do that to go down to two patients or two people that are living in a house. In other words, they weren't restricted by the Fair Housing Act and the ADA like we are in our zoning code. And so that's why they're able to go down to that level, too. That's why the municipalities supported that change, to change, to give that, to give up the authority to regulate this business, give it to the state who more clearly has that power and not to be subject to the Fair Housing Act and ADA in this context, whereas we still are within the zoning context. And so that's why, and you'll see, in fact, our zoning code is mimicked off Prescott. And at that time, if you remember, sort of Prescott was the leader within the state as having a number of problems and then also a leader in the state as far as being a restrictive zoning code for the benefit, both for the community and also for the benefit of the patients, so that they would receive adequate care. And so that's sort of the reason. And that's why, if you look back on the history of why the league and the municipalities encourage and supported that change in legislation.
Any other questions, Frankie?
No, that's helpful. I just couldn't remember that conversation from our, when we, now I recollect that, having that conversation when we talk about our ordinance. But it's still, does it not change, once you register as a sober living home, nothing changes as far as them being, becoming a business now? Not really. I guess it's still residential, but is there any change there or is it just residential slash your business home?
So not for, if it's, if it meets the definite, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor Heredia, if it meets the definition of family, it doesn't alter the zoning requirements. So you have to kind of, you have to view the licensing of the business and the regulation of the business separate from the zoning. And so you have to see those as separate. And so the state's ability to regulate the business is separate from the zoning and the, sort of the number four, which just, you know, within Arizona, to my knowledge, it's the lowest number other than one municipality. The one municipality I'm aware of that has a number lower than four does not enforce their number because of the issues that they have with enforcement of a number lower than four. We discussed that a little bit two years ago. So, and when you see municipalities that have made changes in just the last sort of six months or a year, they're going, you see them going to four. I'm not aware of any municipality in Arizona that's gone to a lower number in the last year or two. So that's sort of the, that is sort of the common sort of number that you will see in municipalities.
Thank you.
All right.
I wanted to add just one thing is that we've already reached out to the league and the league's reached out to us on changing the legislation. Multiple cities are involved in this. We had an extensive meeting in just the last couple of weeks with the league and multiple cities on changing the state statute. The biggest changes are the ones that Candace discussed, the definition and how it's being gamed and also sort of data, data being shared between DHS and the municipalities and access also. And then there's also a number of more nuanced, smaller issues that we're also reaching out to be able to look at changes. And so there's a very active group that has already started to work on this at the league and multiple cities are working on it. So this isn't, I know it's showing us, you know, a council direction to go forward. These things are already, are already moving in many aspects. And so I just want to be aware of that.
Thank you. Other questions and comments on this item?
I guess I just have a question for Councilmember Spillsbury. So you're, the way, yours are less than five and not meeting, not within the definition of a sober living, so unlicensed. That's the issue. Okay. Okay. Most of them are, so they're falling in between. They're not over five, so we're not capturing them and they're, okay. I didn't, appreciate that.
And Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, one of the things we're recommending to DHS, too, is a lot of these facilities claim that they're four or less. And part of it is we want DHS as part of this, their licensing is because they require individual contracts for the individuals that are at each home, that we actually get notified as to the actual numbers in these homes. And so that we're able to actually know, are they really, are they really four? Because there's obviously been a few homes where there's been allegations that it's more and it's very difficult to be able to sort of show this. And so that's one of the, I'm just trying to give you by way of example, one of the more nuanced things that we've already started to discuss at the league and that we're going to discuss as far as changing, both in data sharing with DHS, both in the statute and potentially in the regs. So there, you know, the PowerPoint gives you sort of the highlights, but there are many other sort of smaller issues that we also have seen that we think will also have an impact.
So how do we confirm the number of people for a community residence typically? You said it's hard to confirm how many there are.
Right. So you, yeah. So there is no, other than going to the house and asking someone and that's the problem is people now, some of these are run in such a way that it appears that people have been trained to say the number four before we almost get to the door. And so, and so we want, we want to sort of be a partner with DHS to determine, really, are they well-run? And is the number they're telling us when we go to the front door, is that the real number? Because they, if it's licensed, they'll know the real number.
And we can't cross the threshold, so we're just not allowed to, we can't really verify it. But the state can.
Of course, Mr. Freeman.
So I know there's good operators in our, in our city and I believe that they're sensitive to our neighborhood issues and they're operating correctly, whether they're four or five and up to 10. And I believe that. However, there are those that are not operating, probably licensed as well, and as far as some are under four or more, or four or less. My question is, if I had a community residence in my neighborhood, five or more is licensed, could I then have others around there, less than five? Like several homes in there, like I'm experiencing today in this?
Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, you could because the 1,200-foot distance is only between community residences. And so if they have less than five, they haven't registered with the city. And so it could be in the house next door and we wouldn't necessarily know about it unless, again, there was a complaint and we went out and were able to observe enough information that let us know that that was being used as a sober living home.
But now we can ask them to register, get a business license, right?
We can.
For a discounted rate of $10, what's the normal rate?
25 or 30?
So we've talked, I think we've talked about going to 25 or 30 eventually. But my caution on the business registry, when we brought this forward with the chamber, that's all we talked about is being a registry. We use it as an incentive if you want assistance from the city for small business assistance. We ask that, we require you to get registered a business license. But we've had businesses say, well, what if I don't get, what if I don't register? And we say, then you don't get registered and you don't get the information and we don't have information about the business. We've registered maybe, what, 3,000 or less businesses? We think there's 9,000 out there. It just, you know, their choice, they don't want to be registered with the city. And so as we worked with the business community to do that, that was one of the questions is, well, how are you going to enforce this? And we really don't. We just try to use it more of a, as an incentive, as encouragement that if you do that, the city's more ability to provide assistance and know what's happening in your, your business.
No, that's fine. I'm not worried about the dollar amount. I just want them to register, have a business license so we know where they're at and what's going on. I think that's fair. With that, I get it. It all hinges on our legislative changes. You've addressed that. So I look forward to that and the staff working on that. Thanks.
Any other comments? Ms. Spillsbury?
I just, I don't know if anyone's watching, but I thought I would also maybe just thank the neighborhoods that I've been working with and their patience in this because they're beyond frustrated and, and nothing happens quickly and they want it to happen a lot more quickly than it is. And so I just appreciate their willingness to work with the city and to be patient as we try to figure all of this out. And we have a large section in Gilbert and a large section in Mesa since it's on the border. And so I just appreciate their willingness to kind of work through this with us and to realize why and understand why we can't just go in and shut them down. So I just, I don't know if anyone's watching, but I wanted to thank them. My last thing I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you.
One more comment.
Yes, Ms. Duff.
Can we require certain classifications of business if you're in that type of business where we require you to register with the city? Can we do something like that? No?
So Mayor and Councilmember Duff, I think, and what Candace's presentation was, is that these businesses are required to have a business license.
With the city?
With the city.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any other comments? Let me, I want to reiterate something that Ms. Spillsbury said a moment ago. We understand how frustrating this is for a neighborhood to have a bad operator impacting your neighborhood. That's, that's very frustrating. We've heard some horrible stories. We've seen some horrible things happening with these bad operators. And again, that's not because the good operators, you wouldn't know that they're there. They're part of the neighborhood and there is no alcohol, there is no drugs allowed on the premises. And the bad operators, what we're seeing is that bad behavior is spilling out into the neighborhood. And so literally what we're trying to do here is regulate organized crime because the bad operators are in the fraud business and they are doing everything they can to avoid and sneak around any legitimate regulation. And as we've talked about earlier, that's, the city's been preempted by the state. So we have to, we don't have a health department. That's the better place to regulate it. So, and I know that there's, well, at the state level to address this, our governor and our attorney general and our executive director of access, who Mr. Heredia knows very well, held a press conference. They're all pursuing, as vigorously as they can, prosecutions related to this. And, and I know that they're, and I've spoken with all three of them about this. I know it's at the top of their agenda. And so to those frustrated neighborhoods, I would just say, again, thank you for your patience. We are working with this at a state level to change the legislation to allow for better enforcement. And business license may or may not be the one thing that the city can do. But again, I'm hesitant to go down that route because it was literally just a month ago that we sold to the business community. If you let us, you know, put a business license requirement on you, we promise this is not a bait and switch. We're not trying to regulate you. We just need to know who you are so we can get information to you. So I'm, before we march down that path, I think we need to have some additional discussion about that. But again, this is agendized to provide direction. Candace, I think, hopefully you feel like you've received that. We are, do want to proceed full steam with cooperating with the state to see this rectified.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And we'll continue down this. I don't believe this will be the last time that we'll be having this conversation. So I think this will be an ongoing topic over at least the next year.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Council, next item on our agenda is current events and conferences attended. Who would like to start? Anyone? Okay, Ms. Duff.
I'll go, okay. Last Thursday, I attended Forza La Cala, our local first, Dining for Dreams. It was a fundraiser for aspiring restaurateurs and the graduates of their bootcamp at the El Rancho Commercial Kitchen. It's one of my favorite events to go to every year and many of the students have cultural dishes from their families and have these family recipes from around the world. It's amazing. And going forward, we'll have opportunities on Main Street in our restaurant incubator, I forgot the name of it, and which will be placing some of the graduates, if they wish, to set up small businesses inside of a food court type of design in order to try out their business as a restaurant and see if they can graduate that into a full-fledged restaurant. So, and this is just the, creating the, your, why am I drawing a blank? Not enough Dr. Pepper. Your business plan and exercising that and having sampling and going to the public. And so the restaurant incubator would be the way to bring that to the next stage. On Friday night, some of us were at the, Councilmember Freeman, Councilmember Spillsbury, the mayor, and I were at the Arizona Museum of Natural History for their exhibit opening called Why Aren't They Here? And they had skeletons of very large mammals that walked the earth in the southwest. And there was, there's an exhibit discussing why they're no longer here, whether, and their environment and the impact from humans and such. And the exhibit is in Spanish and English, so I'm glad to see that there. And then I won't talk about the ID museum because I think someone else will.
Yeah, I think we just, we already talked about it last Thursday, but the museums both have new exhibits. So the ID museum is the Luminous Art of Light. It's amazing. A bunch of us, we're all there on Thursday night and it's just incredible. So take your kids and grandkids to that. And then this Wednesday is National Coffee with a Cop Day. In my area, there's four different areas around the city, so find whichever one's closest to you. But mine will be at Pura Vida Grinds on 3820 East Main Street from 10:00 to 11:30. So come talk to me and police officers and it'll be great.
Anything else, Council?
Am I allowed to comment on the agenda still or did I miss my window and I just need to do it upstairs?
Do you want to go back over one of the agenda items?
Just really quick, I just want to make a comment.
Sure.
Okay. I didn't want to do it and then like have it not be, okay. I just, I was trying to decide what I wanted to do and I just didn't make a decision soon enough to bring it up then. But with the drive-through ordinance, I'm not feeling comfortable with it still, but I know that this is just for introduction and not for the vote. So I just wanted to, if you watched Thursday, you know how I feel about this. But in case people are watching tonight, I didn't want it to be unsaid that I am still uncomfortable with some of the pieces of the ordinance. And so I'm not going to ask for it to be taken off the consent agenda. I will probably just vote yes so that it can be for introduction. But I just wanted to make it publicly known that that's how I feel.
Yeah, that's a fair point to make. And we might have some public show up and take it off the consent agenda, but we'll see. So in the event it doesn't, that's noted.
Okay.
Thank you. Council, yes, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. I think you attended as well St. Luke's Church. Pastor Luke there, we did a Sleep in Heavenly Peace. They built 115 beds for orphans and other children to sleep on this past Saturday. It was a really great event, kicked off at 7:30. I think, Mayor, you came later on and gave another raw roast speech. And so, I mean, it's awesome work to see them work so fast and safely to build beds. And then they have a warehouse where they keep the beds and they deliver them all throughout the month. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I didn't mention this on Thursday because I had to leave the meeting prematurely, but I just want to thank the council for, and the vice mayor for allowing me to be gone a week ago. I spent three days in Korea, had a wonderful experience there, met with a city that we are exploring a sister city relationship with, Wijiangbu, remarkable place. When I describe it to you, you'll think I'm talking about Mesa in terms of population and their economy and their priorities. And so I'm excited with the possibility of our Mesa Sister Cities organization pursuing that. And then the next two days was with the governor and economic development director for the state and the governor's chief of staff and had great meetings with amazing companies, LG and Samsung and others and opened, was there, when the governor opened a trade office in Seoul. I think it's going to, that trip's going to bear some good fruit. We would love to see more advanced manufacturing in the city of Mesa and, and electric vehicles and semiconductors. There's no better place to be than South There's no better place to be than South Korea to have those meetings. And so I'm looking forward to what's going to come from those meetings. Also, since we last met, I, I had the privilege of being appointed to the Electric Vehicle Working Group for the federal government and working on policies for adopting infrastructure and promoting the use of electric vehicles. It's a convening of the Department of Transportation and Energy made these appointments. So I just want you to know that I am doing that and would look forward to. I've been trying to learn as much as I can about that topic, and would invite the public and folks in the city to, to let me know if they have any thoughts on that topic, that I can incorporate in what I'm doing in that assignment. All right. Council, if there's nothing else for us to go over. Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just let the council know, we are not going to have a study session this Thursday, October 5th. But it is a very busy day. That day will kick off Fire Prevention Month with a pancake breakfast, starting at 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at the Fire Admin Building. And then, starting at 8:00 a.m. that morning, we'll have our employee and benefits fair at the Mesa Convention Center. So for council, the next study session will be Thursday, October 12. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have another meeting to go to. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are adjourned.